This is our Commissioner's Status Update. It's October 3rd, 2023. The time is 10:01 a.m. I'm calling this meeting to order in attendance are Commissioners Brooks, Matarri, and Duncan. Are there any changes to the agenda? No? All right. I would just ask to handle Item 10 second and Item 2 last because of the executive session on that instead, all right?
Yep.
Okay. Then we can start with our Community Action Partnership Public Official Designee. And Mr. Smith, are you here today? If you want to come up to the table and go ahead and push the button so the microphone is green and you can just leave it right there. Hi.
Hello.
So this is not something that's typically on our Commissioner liaisons through the community, so maybe you want to explain a little bit about this and how is it that the Commissioners have to appoint somebody?
Yeah, and I don't know that it is necessarily the Commissioners appointing somebody. My understanding is that the county has the right to have a representative on the Community Action Partnership Board, and I don't know if everyone is familiar kind of with how it came to be or what all it does, but essentially it is just a... The North Idaho Community Action Partnership Board is basically from Idaho County to, you know, all northern counties north of Idaho County, and Assotin County, and Whitman County, and Washington, and Oregon, and takes funds from like Avista and the different power companies of the counties as well as... And there are a certain amount of funds that are designated for like Community Action Partnership, and they perform duties on their behalf such as like weatherization, energy assistance for low income or poverty level individuals. So the goal is to rid the counties of poverty and help close the gap and provide those who can't afford it more energy efficient homes, a place to live, they do the food banks in all the counties, things like that. So it's a rather large budget. It's about eight or nine million a year that they get in grants and put out in the community. And as such, I believe there's... I'm not exactly how, what counties are selected to have a representative, how that's picked, because there are 10 people, and five of them are public sector or representatives of a county, and five of them are private sector, representatives of the private sector in each county. So when I moved here about six years ago, I was told that our county had a representative, and that individual was looking to step down as serving, and I took his place. And so I've done that for about four or five years, currently the Treasurer on the Board of Directors, and it came that my, I guess, term or the nomination had lapsed and that I needed some public official to reappoint me to continue to serve essentially on behalf of the county. So I didn't have never really done that before. I'm not, I guess, absolutely aware of what gives you guys the authority or power to do that, other than it has to be some public official, a new Commissioner Brooks, and so I reached out to him because it's about the only public official that I, that I, you know, know or...
And you admit it?
Yeah, that's right. That's right. Should we turn this off? So my understanding when I took it was that it was serving on the behalf of the mayor, but I don't know how much or any truth there is to that, to be honest.
Yeah, so I mean, obviously, we're not the mayor.
Yeah.
So any questions, Bruce?
How long did you say you've been on the, on this board?
Since about four, almost five years.
Really?
Yeah.
I guess we should figure out, I mean, you're sure that it's the county that's responsible for this appointment?
I was told, and I have, I don't, I didn't bring the form with me, but I sent it and I can give you guys another copy, that essentially it was just a, you know, public official nomination that just needed to be signed by someone sitting in a public seat.
So I probably would guess at this point, if there is no bylaws or statute that requires the Commissioners to do this, if it is just a, you just have to have somebody vouch for you, then I think Commissioner Brooks can do that on his own. I mean, how do you feel about that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. And that, my understanding is that's all that's required. I know that they, because of the size of our county, they wanted a public representative from the county, and that's kind of in their, you know, the rules that they can kind of, I guess, pick, you know, who is represented, as long as all the counties have a chance to be represented. And I think for theirs, it's just that someone acknowledges, I guess, that I would be appropriate to serve, serve on the county's behalf.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I'm fine if that's something you'd like to do, Bill.
I would me.
Okay. All right, well, then I guess you have your answer, and if you need a written communication from Bill, you can reach out to him and get that done and do that. So, yeah, I mean, unless we're presented with statute or some type of other official documentation that the Board has to make recommendation, then we probably, at least speaking for me, I probably wouldn't do that.
Right, and I don't, I don't know that that, you know, I know that that is not necessary. I know that they, you know, they have their own process to approve board members, and for some reason, I guess, because this is a public sector nominee, there's, yeah, I think just any individual to vouch for me, I think would be all that I need.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for coming in.
Yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
All right, we can skip down to Item 10, and this is the NACO, National Association of Counties' Operation Green Light for Veterans. And Jonathan, you did some research on this, so is there anything that you wanted to add besides what we have in the documentation?
No, Chairman, it's self-explanatory. It's just a, it's like a declaration. You do, veterans on Veterans Day in other counties participate, I can give the thanks to the other Commissioners.
So in our packets, I had it printed, but for some reason it's not here. Any thoughts on that? And I wanted to say there was something about we would change some light bulbs to be green during that time. So is that something you want to entertain, because then Jonathan can get more details or even just take care of that? How do you feel about that, Bill?
No.
You don't want to do it?
No.
Okay. Bruce?
How long is this for again? A day? A week?
Let's see here. November 6th through November 12th. Yep, show support for veterans by lighting up our buildings green for that week.
Do we have... I would probably lean on the side of not doing it, just because when we do it for one group, we're going to have other groups asking, and right now, we don't do it for anybody.
We do a lot for veterans in Hootney County.
Yeah.
And turning on light bulbs is not going to help many people, honestly.
Well, I agree with that assessment.
All right, sounds good. Item number three, North Idaho Crisis Center Board Position. Bill?
North, I'm sorry, I'm having...
Oh, North Idaho Crisis Center Board Position? You received a letter from Mayor Hammond?
About?
About serving on the North Idaho Crisis Center.
Oh, yes, 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 okay, I'm sorry. I'm really not hearing today. Yes, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay.
And I do have, I do have that letter.
Okay. And Bruce, any thoughts on that?
As far as appointing someone on there?
Correct.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, so it's an action item, so if you wanted to make a motion at this point?
Go ahead, Bill.
I make, I can't hear today. I'm, you notice I'm minus one hearing aid.
You want to do a motion?
Yes, I knew what to say.
Oh.
Oh, it's fine. I move that we appoint Bill Brooks as the North Idaho Crisis Center for their board position.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye.
All right, Item 4, ICRAMP, which is the Idaho County's Risk Management Program Coverage Availability. Bill, this is you? Sorry, on Item number four, the ICRAMP one, do you not have an agenda?
Okay. Oh, and that was, that was about, can we have someone else insure instead of ICRAMP? Or does it have to be ICRAMP?
Ensure what? Ensure the county? Well, we've gotten bids in the past, we've had people purchase in the past, but they're really the best deal for us.
Well, I had somebody who sells that sort of insurance ask.
Okay.
And they said, how come it's always ICRAMP and I never get shot?
Sure.
And I said, well, I'll put it on the agenda for the next...
Okay, well, if you, if another Commissioner agreed to have a presentation from an outside insurance agency, I mean, I don't have a problem with them. I think their performance and their, their training and those kinds of things, I think they're very valuable, so.
I mean, if you want to have them provide a quote and just see, it probably never hurts every once in a while to do that.
And this would be once in a while, because I don't think, I've seen anybody else but them. And the, the point of the individual asking was that, and I've seen it in hospitals with medical malpractice. In Alaska, we were required to take these states' insurance policy, and no matter what it was, they would settle it, because they figured, we'll just up your, jack your rates up next year. And according to this individual, that's, that's what ICRAMP does also.
So...
No, I don't know if that's the case.
Right, well, yes, the actual impression is that they settle, and there's good reason for it, because they understand the risk involved of bringing something to a jury trial, so they weigh it very, very heavily, and then they decide, okay, a jury trial's going to cost this much, we could settle the case for half or a third of that, so then sometimes that's what happens, but it's a case by case basis.
So the message is sue, sue the county and they'll settle?
Well, on the merits of the case, I mean, if there is zero merit and they feel confident going to trial, then, then yeah, they would do that.
That's where it's supposed to be, I know.
Yeah, exactly. So, yeah, it's, it's a risk, it's risk management is what the whole thing is, so.
I'd like to have this fellow come in.
Okay, so it's not just, they can't just write us the quote and do this, they have to get a bunch of information that will take our HR department quite a bit to put it together. They'll have to get information from the current, from ICRAMP in order to put this proposal together.
Right, if they're interested, they'll do it.
Okay.
If they don't do it, they're really not interested.
Right, it's just a lot of work on the county's part too, to do that, so. Okay, Bruce, questions?
Yeah, no, that's fine. Every once in a while, yeah, that's fine.
Okay. All right, Item 5, this is assessor litigation, and it's an action item, and Bruce, you are on here, but... Bayla, are you on the telephone? Ben, do you want to come forward?
Yes, I am.
Okay, great.
I'm on the call.
Okay.
So the idea of this discussion really is just to kind of reinforce the fact that we did have a meeting and we did allocate a budget for any potential litigation, and that budget included everything, all the costs. That, that was the pile of money that was allocated to manage this process. And I've done this personally, where you give a budget to an attorney and you ask, what can you do with this money? And here's what I'm trying to accomplish, and quite often, they will work with you to try to find a way to, to meet that goal. And so that's really what this discussion was, because I know there's been some emails kind of flying back and forth, asking if, does the money include A, B, C, and so forth? And yes, the money is inclusive of all expenses.
Okay, thank you for that, and that's a clarification. This is Bayla Kovacs, assessor talking. I'm not sure if you can hear me, but that was a clarification that I had requested. It is a topic of, that's coming up in the conversations I'm having with attorneys, and that was, that was one question that I had. Another question that has come up is because the discussion occurred with the Board and with the Prosecuting Attorney's Office in the context of an executive session, there seems to, the attorneys want to know what that budget is. My question is, can that be divulged? Can we, can I give the actual budget to the attorneys so they know what the ceiling is?
Well, like I said, I've done that in the past with a client and with an attorney, and said, here's what I'm trying to accomplish, what can you do with that money?
Well, that's not, that's not really my question. My question's in the context of an executive session. Generally speaking, topics covered in an executive session are sealed. I am, I'm asking, can, because the budget, the dollar value that was given to me in the executive session is subject to the veil of privacy, can I divulge the dollar value, which is the budget?
Well, if you're divulging it to an attorney, then it would be attorney-client privilege that would be okay, I'm pretty sure. Does anyone want to weigh in on that?
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, it's, it's a budget, and so he has authority, yes, to divulge that to his attorney.
It doesn't get advertised.
Correct, yeah, and attorney, obviously.
No, no, yeah. My question is, does the Board take exception to me divulging it, because this was a topic covered in executive session? That's my question.
Well, I certainly wouldn't, because it would be in pursuit of what we had agreed that you would do.
Correct, yes. The Board is in agreement that you may share that budget information with your prospective attorney.
Okay. And I have one other question, if I may ask at this time. This is something that came up, I'm having conversations and discussions with the attorneys, but this came up in the context of the conversations. So, you know, the timing is odd, because it just came up yesterday, and we're having this, this status meeting update today. The question is, in the context of a 1993 Attorney General Opinion, it's 93-8, I just ended up sending an email to counsel, on this internal counsel. And the question is, is documenting in a public manner the case of necessity? I don't know that it's appropriate to go into the conversation here in the context of this status update meeting. I simply wanted to alert the Board to that, that it's a new question that arose, and I submitted this question to legal counsel moments before this status meeting began at 10 a.m. So it's just a new development, and I'm just simply apprising the Board of it.
Right, so, so there is no issue. We, we've done everything we needed to do. Yeah, the Board did address it, so you're, you're good there, Bayla.
Oh, okay, I would ask that, that the Prosecuting Attorney's Office respond to the email that I sent, provide that information that I've asked for.
Okay, if the, if the civil attorney has your email, I'm sure that they'll respond to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Stan, did you want to?
Hey, Bayla, are you on the phone still?
Yes, I am.
As you know, you, you sent that email about 10 minutes before this hearing started, so you do have to be patient and get a response. That's all I wanted.
Yeah, no, I, I really, I realize the timing...
I didn't ask any questions, I just wanted to put that on the record, just to be a little patient. Thank you.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, and I'm not being impatient, I just, I, that's why I brought it up, because I just sent it, and the timing has nothing to do with the status update. I just wanted to get the information to you and to Dave as quickly, because I know it's something we're trying to work on.
Okay, well, no problem. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
All right, Item 6, this is the IAC, which is Idaho Association of Counties Conference Update, and Commissioner Matarri and I attended last week, and Commissioner Matarri wanted to give some updates.
Yes, because we all go down there, the Commissioners all go down there together, and we talk about all kinds of wonderful things related to county business. And a couple of those items were legislative issues that we discussed. They're working on some legislation that some Commissioners would like to see the cap limit on property taxes be tied to the CPI and not have a hard 3% limit. So we'll see how that goes. There's some proposed or proposals being tossed about regarding wind farms and federal land and having a little more control at the local level of how that process is managed. Another issue was fentanyl. Strangely enough, fentanyl does not have the same kind of mandatory minimum sentencing requirements that other substances, controlled substances have. So they're working on trying to do that as well. You know, I talked a little bit about growth, how we're managing it, some of the things that we've done up here with respect to salaries, working with law enforcement, getting within 3% of quartile lane. You know, it was actually quite refreshing to hear from our sheriff that I believe we already have one lateral who's joined us since we put the matrix into place. One returning deputy, and then we had, is it eight total laterals that showed up for testing one day?
We, we did have eight show up for public safety testing, and I, we have the most in backgrounds that we've, we've had in a long time.
That's excellent. So, I mean, just to put that into perspective, you know, with the eight plus one, if we were to hire all eight, that would add up to about, what, $950,000 in recruiting and training expenses that we would have avoided had we not, had we had to go out and actually recruit and go through the training process, the full training process?
Correct.
Yeah, so that's good, that's good. So we talked about that a little bit. And we also, one of the things that I discussed was that I wanted to follow up and see how these salary adjustments have worked, past and current, so that we can have some monitoring with that, just to see if there's other areas where we can improve, on the recruiting side especially, and that in the end, you know, we want success throughout our county government. And so it's just real important that we're constantly, you know, working towards achieving that goal. So Commissioner Duncan, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Nope, it just is a good chance to meet with other counties and find out how they're doing things and what their struggles are, and yeah, just another good conference, long, really, really long, but packed with stuff, so, yeah, that's all I have to add today. So, Bill, any questions?
Oh, I'm pretty much have to take the word of the other two Commissioners, because I can't get down there in my wheelchair. It's just not practical, let alone get a hotel room.
Sure. All right, Item 7, impact fees, parks and waterways.
This was just really a follow-up from a previous discussion where we had, is it Ann Westcott, I think? She looked at what would the impact be if we did not collect an impact fee for parks and waterways? And apparently would pretty much wipe out about 80 to 90% of the fees that we would capture, because most of the growth occurs in the cities. So tomorrow morning, we're going to be meeting with the Mayors, and I'd like to at least discuss that with them, that we could, you know, shelve the impact fee for the parks and waterways until maybe we can get some buy-in, that they can understand how that affects the county, and that those fees are really used for the boat launches largely, and the city residents do enjoy that. And so this isn't about making more parks, kind of like what the cities do, but this is more for the infrastructure for our existing, a lot of our existing ramps and things like that. So if the Board is okay with something like that, then I'll certainly proceed with the Mayors and discussing that, you know, we're tabling it for now, but we would really like to find a way where we could work with them, because the money is applied towards, you know, a lot of the boating activities.
Okay, yeah, I mean, that's always good to have a discussion with our partners in the county. Bruce, I mean, Bill, anything else?
Oh.
Okay, is that it?
Yeah, that's it on that.
Okay, Item 8, Justice Center Discussion.
Yeah, no, this one was one that really was the result of some things that have happened in the past couple of weeks that just kind of opened my eyes up to what's going on, and I think it's important that this Board has a discussion about it. The Justice Center and the jail pods are really kind of intertwined a little bit, because they address fund balance, but every time we seem to have a meeting with this Justice Center, the numbers and dates always seem to change. They slide here and there. And one of the big things that was really important to me was that back in March, that we would, that we agreed that we would have a final decision in August, and even if we didn't have all the information, we never really addressed that with this Justice Center. And I feel like whenever the Board is presented with decisions, you know, they're based upon incomplete or incorrect information. And it wasn't until I asked the department head two weeks ago in September, how much this building cost, and then I saw an email drafted a day later, did it become crystal clear to me how broken this process is, I believe. There is an additional $3.5 million that nobody seems to want to discuss in a meaningful way as part of the total cost of this Justice Center. Was anyone on this Board aware of an additional $3.5 million in soft construction and furniture costs?
So on June 26th, the total amount was brought forward, 38 million, which included the soft costs and the designs.
Yeah, but we've never had a meaningful discussion about that, and in fact, our decisions in March were based upon what turned out to be construction costs and not the soft costs. And that was how our fund balance stuff was, was, you know, discussed back in March. And we've never had that meaningful discussion, because we have to draw out a fund balance. And, you know, the primary word that I think has to be thought about is transparency. And let, let me explain a little bit what I mean by that. Jonathan, can you put that chart up, please? And I have a handout for the both of you.
Thank you.
Okay. So if you go back to February of 2022, the Board was presented with a cost estimate of $22 million for that building, and this is it right here, and it had all of the costs in it. And correspondingly, the Board allocated $22 million of ARPA funds to the Justice Building in that June. And if you fast forward to December 13th, there was a resolution that was passed, and that's the first item up there on the far left, February 22, that's the bar chart. And then you fast forward to December 13th, 2022, and there was a resolution that was passed to allocate an additional $4,376,021 of ARPA funds toward the building pre-construction and construction expenses, thereby allocating a total of $26,376,021. And it was clear, when you look at how this resolution was passed, that the Board recognized that there were some, that this building was going to cost a lot more money. And so you move up, and that's the second bar, it's in the chart right there, that's December 2022. Then you go to March 16th, 2023, okay? Now, that meeting is titled Current Project Cost Estimate, Current Project Cost. And in the handout from Bouton Construction, they gave us a dollar amount of $35,273,649, and that was presented to the Board. Those extra $3.5 million of project expenses that I was not aware of at the time were never discussed during that meeting. It was implied that all the expenses were built in there, because again, the title of the meeting was Current Project Cost Estimate, not Current Construction Cost Estimate. And words have meanings in this particular situation. So the following week, we decided how to allocate our fund balance, and that meeting on March 21, 2023 is an important status update meeting for this Board. This was when we needed to allocate fund balance toward the construction project. Now, the March 16th meeting, or the March meeting, is where you... Now, the March 16th meeting, or the March meeting, is where you have 35 million, that's the third bar over there. So you can see it just continues to go up. This is when we needed to allocate the fund balance. And here are some key discussion points during that meeting. At 16 minutes, I asked, when do we expect to have our numbers? August was the reply from Commissioner Duncan. At 17:06, Commissioner Duncan said, if we pick 2.5 months, and that's reserve fund balance, two and a half months, and I agree with you, by the way, that it should be three months, but in this particular situation, two and a half is satisfactory, we can add 4.6 million to 11 million of extra reserve fund balance that can be applied towards this building. And if you do 6 million, and this is a quote, "If you do 6 million for the building and 6 million for the jail pods, you still have some stuff left over," end quote. And this was a critical statement for me and one that I heavily relied upon to proceed. And we even agreed, and I remember saying this to Commissioner Brooks, you know, let's say yes today and decide tomorrow. And so the motion that was made by this board, and it's, I made the motion, quote, "I move that we proceed with using fund balance for the Justice Center expansion and that our final decision will be when we get the final numbers for the cost of this business, which will be by August of this year." And all three of us agreed to that. We all agreed to that. And there's two key takeaways from that meeting. First, at no point during this meeting were those $3.5 million expenses ever discussed, even though they were discussed at some point in the past because we have them in this Lombard contract. It's 3.5 million roughly in soft costs and furniture. And I wasn't aware of this. So that wasn't discussed. And then I'm not so sure that we can properly proceed with this construction project because we never followed up in August like we said we would. I don't know if we're even in compliance at this point. And so you fast forward to September 21, 2023, at our ARPA, CSL, FRF, LATCF meeting. And exactly two minutes into that meeting on the video, I ask a department head, quote, "Do you have any idea what this building is going to come out at total cost? Not construction cost, total cost," end quote. The answer I got was 38,000, and then Commissioner Duncan corrected her and said that it was 38 million. A subordinate corrected her and said the cost was 34.8 million for construction, and the department head suggested the LCA piece would be more. However, the subordinate said she believes that 34.8 million included those costs. Now, here is where it's most frustrating for me in this process. The very next day, okay, the very next day at 12:48 PM, 25 hours later, that department head sent an email to the budget director saying that the all-in project cost was 38 million, 329,405. Lo and behold, that 3.5 million bucks is in the extra expense that appeared in writing. Now, you know who wasn't on this email? Anyone want to take a guess? None of us. None of us was on this email. The system is broken, in my opinion, when we're not properly informed about major financial decisions. We've never had a full discussion, a meaningful discussion about what the total cost of this building would be. Yes, it was blurted out in discussion, but it was never, it's going up, it's never, where is the money going to come from? We've been talking about the Justice Center expansion, we've been talking about completing the jail pods, and we've been talking about the sheriff's office move. And we're going to be drawing down a lot of money to do this stuff. And meanwhile, I feel like I keep asking for good numbers, and we're never really having it. And our March meeting was really the beginning where we were presented with a cost estimate for the project. We made a decision on that, which was 35 million bucks. And then in June, 38 million comes up, but we never talk about how it went up by 3 million, where that money is going to come from, none of that stuff. And, you know, even the budget director was a little surprised because she wasn't aware of this 3.5 million specifically and where it was going to come from until that Friday email. And she, like myself, have always thought that these soft costs were built into this project. And when people don't understand what's going on, that's a problem. And every conversation, I've stated publicly, that we need to know what this building will cost to see if it makes financial sense, especially since we are moving a large portion of the sheriff's office to Hayden, and we must, we must complete these jail pods. And so in case anyone wants to know, we have serious liability issues here, and I think everyone knows this, we've talked about this. We have been past our legal limit every day for the last year in our jail population. If we do not expand the jail, there is no Plan B to manage the number of inmates in our jail. We have not had a discussion about a Plan B. I was told in March there was going to be a discussion, but we've never had a discussion since about how that was meaningfully going to be managed. I came into this process midway, and I relied upon the good faith of others that all of the numbers would be presented when they were known, when they were known, and that no information would be withheld in any way, shape, or form at any time during this process. And you can see on this chart, if you look, it's only 19 months, it's gone up 16 million, 307,134. That is a 74.05% increase in cost. This is a lot of money we're talking about. This is taxpayer money. And so, you know, and just by the way, to put this into perspective, you know, since September 22nd, just 10 days ago, the total cost for this project went up another $300,000. That spreadsheet was sent out yesterday compared to the September 22nd email. So we're now at a total of 38 million, 644,283. Now, if you go back to April 13th of 2022, during a Justice Center meeting, Commissioner Brooks said it would cost 42 million. And this was when it was proposed to be only 22 million. Now, who here wants Commissioner Brooks to be right about this? And no offense, Commissioner Brooks, but the reality is that if you are right, we are really in deep on this one building. And at this rate, I don't like to say this, but he's getting proven right every day. So at this point, I cannot support this building anymore unless the following conditions are met for this board. The first one is that the budget director is included in all of the working group meetings, that she gets notice of projects that fall through within one week, is involved in validating every quarterly ARPA report, and the board reviews and approves all quarterly reports before submitting them. That's the first thing. The second thing is that you show me where we're going to get the money to complete the jail pods, the sheriff's office move, and the Justice Center in that order. I want to see the absolute maximum amount of fund balance we're going to spend to complete these projects, where that money is going to come from, and how much money will be left over to purchase items like cars and have money for emergency funds for unexpected repairs and other expenses that we might occur, incur. And third, that we show all the information in public, in a public meeting, and get feedback from our taxpayers on whether we should draw this much fund balance down and operate without any meaningful financial cushion. Don't get me wrong, I recognize the need for this Justice Center. I do. I walked through our old courthouse, people are sitting on top of each other, there's no question about it. But the system is broken for this information, and until it gets fixed, I cannot support this. And until I understand where these numbers are coming from, I cannot support this. And I don't have a good sense of that. It's not working.
All right. Phil?
I guess I, I couldn't have said it better. I think we're, we're in a spin that's going to take us right up, as I said, before it's all said and done, to $65 million. I know that's how much, but I think that's where we're headed.
So I, sorry how this is all, you know, gone through and that you felt like you didn't have the right information. I think that your requirements going forward are absolutely necessary and workable, and I am happy to work on that information. I do keep track of this stuff. I...
Look, I agree, but I'm sorry, I didn't feel this way. This isn't about feeling. This meeting says project cost.
Right.
The numbers presented to us suggest it's a project cost, but there was 3.5 million that was not included in here. This is not a feeling. This is, I made a decision in March, which I really struggled with, and I relied upon the information that this board discussed and that what was presented to us to make this decision. And, you know, if there's any feeling associated here, it's that I feel like I am heavily reliant upon people, especially two months into my tenure here, to make sure that we have good information to make good decisions. But in the end, I don't believe that good information was forced to be brought to the surface so that we can make good decisions.
Okay.
So, and I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, you're fine, you're fine. So going forward, I hear you, and we'll make those corrections. The other corrections we've already made are, ARPA is going to start, we're going to get a project update every Tuesday at 2 o'clock. It's on the pending status list now, so we'll be able to keep track of every single project that ARPA is doing. And that anytime one of the documents in the shared drive is updated, that the emails go out to the auditor and to the board to know, to notice that there's updated documents in there.
And I think we need to figure out if we're going to have to cut a top floor off sooner rather than later.
Well, and, sure. And that I can work with the auditor's office and look at the fund balance situation and see that it's still the same as I remember it to be in June, or if it's changed since June.
Randy Falcon for the record. So just a couple of things that I want to put out there. I also would like to be the reviewer of the LATCF reporting, since you've allocated that to the Justice Building.
Yep.
I also, for me, I was never notified that Rubrik was falling through. It's been alluded to that an HVAC project is going over budget. No one has talked to me since that meeting on the 21st about that. I'm still in the dark. So going forward, I really need to be included when projects are falling through immediately.
Okay.
That's really crucial. And then in terms of fund balance, you know, it wasn't until a little bit later into Commissioner Matarri's term where it started to become more apparent, the jail pods are a priority as well. So I started tracking fund balance to ensure that we had enough for that as well and that. And then when these work packages started coming in, and I saw that Work Package 2 is so much lower than what was presented to the board originally, which means Work Package 3 is going to be huge, for me, that's when I started to panic. In addition, it became obvious I was being kept in the dark about projects falling through when I started to really worry about the state of fund balance. So yes, you and I can talk, but I do want to also present to all three commissioners what's going on with fund balance when you want to discuss that.
Yep, absolutely. And we can put it on for next Tuesday. Is that sufficient?
So Work Package 3 is on the agenda today. So I don't, isn't it on the business meeting today?
No, no, it's, it's Work Package 2.
Okay. Well, that Work Package 2, that's what I'm worried about because it's gone down so much, which means Work Package 3 is going to be huge.
Right, and we can, Bowden will be here, and they will be able to explain.
Yeah, and that's one of my problems, is that, well, Bowden may be able to explain the construction costs, but I don't believe we should have any discussions ever without having a document like this that includes every cost in here and snapshots of the last two costs that were presented before the board so we can see the direction of these costs. You know, are they moving up or are they coming down? Because we cannot make good information, good decisions without good information. And this process, to me, has been presented, well, put it this way, it could have been a lot, a lot better.
Yes, and I would agree.
And, and so, you know, why it's happened the way it's happened, you know, I don't know. But the fact is that I think the first discussion needs to be, where are we going to get the money from so we can complete these three projects? And if we don't have enough money to complete these three projects, then we shouldn't be approving anything more on this Justice Center until we either figure out what we're going to do with respect to a third floor or something else, because I'm not inclined to approve anything else until I know where this money is going to come from and how much money we're going to have to apply to this project.
Okay.
It's just, I don't see how we can do this, how I can make a decision to continue in any way, shape, or form without getting these numbers. And we're in October now. August, we were supposed to have, it's October.
Right. Well, the numbers didn't change materially from June 26th to the work packages 1, 2, and 3.
Yes, but the fund balance allocation and amounts we were talking about, again, my decision in March was, was based upon a statement of $6 million for the building and $6 million for the jail pods. That's what, that is what I made my decision based upon. And I don't believe, unless you believe, that $6 million of fund balance will go towards this building.
Right. Well, yeah, and, and I can get that information and show you kind of where things are in my mind, where I'm looking.
But that's your mind and not the board's mind. And that's part of the problem, is that we're not having these board meetings in meaningful ways. And this is where this process is breaking down, and this board deserves to have the information, all of us do. And I'm sure you would agree with that, so.
Yep, absolutely. That's why we'll make the changes that you suggested, and we'll come forward and do some discussion about the fund balance.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yep. Okay. Item nine, jail pods.
That was really combined in with it. We have this jail pod issue. I believe we're getting numbers for that soon.
Actually, today, we're going to open the request for proposals for design work, but this is what I would like to consider, I'd like the board to consider going forward. Idaho law allows us several ways to get these projects done. Federal law, not so much. So you have design bid build, you have CMGC process, you have these different, even design build, which is not really used here. I would suggest that after opening or acknowledging the receipt of any of the RFPs that we get today, that we actually consider moving to a general, sorry, construction manager, general contractor process, meaning instead of saying design and basing the construction off what the design is, you go to the construction manager piece first, and then they develop the project and they, they have the design underneath them. So it's a much, a less expensive project than starting with design and then having your CMGC work with the design to, to piece it down.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Because I'm trying to understand this also. We just did the Justice Building where we started with the design, right? Because when I look at things, it seems like the designers are the ones holding us up because Bowden is waiting on LCA. When I was re-watching meetings, they couldn't give us final numbers because LCA is running behind. So you're proposing to do something different with the title?
Yes, I'm proposing not start with design because we actually, we already have design. I mean, we, the design is a lot complete because it's based on what we already did during the expansion. So there's a lot of work that doesn't need to be redone. So looking at that process going forward, I think will give us a better product at a much, much lower cost. And honestly, you know, Bowden's done a really good job on the Justice Building with what they have to work with because supply chains and it's just been a nightmare in the whole construction industry and bad timing. And I, I hate it, and I'm going to, you know, we still have some changes that they're making for Work Package 3 that can save a million dollars off the top, but once again, Bowden can speak to more of that.
Yeah, whatever's going to save the taxpayers the most money, get this job done quickly. But I also believe that the sheriff's office should be responsible for this project and the other county resources that can be used to aid it and support it are fine, but they're the ones that have to live with it.
Yes.
And so I believe that, assuming they would want it, that they should be responsible for managing that process.
Yeah, and jail captain Heil has been working on this project.
Yeah, so.
Yep. All right. Now, we are back to item two, and this is KCSO's move to Cootney North. There is an executive session attached to it. I'm not sure that we're going... Not sure that we're going to be set up for any action item afterwards, but we do need to hear from counsel on a matter, so...
Do you want to do public comment first?
Yep, absolutely. We can do that.
You want to make sure the light is green?
Is it green?
Good morning?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Chair Dee Joy for the record. And I'm speaking on my own behalf this morning. I kind of don't know where to start now that I just sat through this meeting. I originally came to address ICRAMP, but now I have two more things if you give me a little bit of your indulgence. So, when it comes to ICRAMP, there is a concern in a taxing district in Cootney County that ICRAMP is playing games. It looks, it looks from the outside like it's political games. The community library network was informed by ICRAMP that their coverage was going to be dropped for all employment and significantly reduced, increased premiums for covering their other stuff. In the last five years, according to the director of CLN, there has only been one insurance claim in five years, and that was for damage to a building during an ice storm. So, the ICRAMP did not provide any reasoning for this pretty dramatic change in covering, which has sent the taxing agency scrambling for more quotes. And like Commissioner Duncan said earlier, it's not just a send us a quote kind of a thing. It's an involved process, so it takes some time. Well, they were up against a hard deadline last week and it really caused a lot of contention in that taxing district. It caused drama where there didn't need to be any. And when I looked into it further, it really looks like political pushback by a member, a board member of ICRAMP, who is the mayor of Pocatello. So, if you guys want to look into all of the cultural and social issues we're having right now, there, in the entire state of Idaho, only one library board changed seats to individuals who are concerned about content being delivered to minors. This mayor of Pocatello is on the opposite side of this social and cultural issue. And this really looks like very bad to those of us looking from the outside into the management and the coverage for our taxing districts. So, that's what I wanted to say about that. Does anyone have any questions?
I, I can respond to that?
Sure.
So, I've been on the ICRAMP board and I don't remember if it was January or when I started. So, that particular taxing district, there was a vetted situation where they, the staff for ICRAMP vetted that potential personnel claim. And so, what they did to mitigate it, they offered assistance and the board rejected the assistance from ICRAMP. So, they had to weigh their risk and that was why they changed their coverage.
So, ICRAMP is projecting that an employee is going to sue the district?
It's a little bit more complicated than that, but that is the reason that the board knows and that the library district knows.
Is this stuff public information that can be FOIA'd?
No.
That's lovely.
A lot of it is not.
Okay, moving on. Number two, was quite shocking, the information presented today by Commissioner Matarri over the justice expansion explosion budget. I want to assure you, this is going to be an incredibly interesting and concerning topic to the public at large. And, and I have full faith that you guys will work together to resolve this stunning budget explosion. It's shocking to say the least. But on top of that, I want to add, if we're going to be all about transparency, when the agendas are done for these meetings and when commissioners put items on it, it would be very helpful to someone who cannot write 100 words a minute to have the information they're going to be discussing included in the agenda packet. Much like you would see, NIC does a very good job of this, where they include attachments to their agenda of everything that's going to be coming up. So, for instance, Bruce Matarri, Commissioner Matarri, I'm sorry, you wanted to discuss the jail expansion and whatnot, and you have this graph, and you referenced a lot of documents. If those could just be given to whoever creates your agenda as attachments, because you wanted that discussion item, it would be so beneficial to people like me who review these and then need, need those details when, you know, understanding what is going on in the county. So, I just want to encourage that level of transparency. And I think that's all I have, but oh my gosh, this was quite the meeting.
Okay. And our business meeting is done that way. If you go on the website, the backup documents are on there already for the business meeting.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. No other public comment online, anything? Okay. Then I would ask for a motion.
A move that we enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 74-2061D.
A second motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?